Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. Before our meetings, we have the opportunity to recognize significant people, but significant events also in our community. And this morning, we have the honor of passing a resolution honoring the Star Tribune for 150 years of continuous newspaper operation in Minneapolis. So would the Star Tribune people want to come up front? Whoever is here for this particular resolution? Did you? Okay, that's great. That's great. Yeah, come on both sides so we can get in the camera there. All right, that's pretty good, I guess. Okay. Well, this is a resolution by all members of the city council, celebrating 150 years of continuous operation of the Star Tribune in Minneapolis. And this is whereas on May 25th, 1867, the Minneapolis Daily Tribune printed its first issue under publisher William S. King. Early stockholders include Dorellius Morrison, a businessman and Minneapolis's first mayor, and William D. Washburn, an industrialist and United States senator. And whereas on May 1st, 1941, the Coles family purchased the Minneapolis Tribune Company and merged it with the Minneapolis Star and Journal Company. And whereas on August 31st, 1987, the combined organization formally became the Star Tribune, newspaper of the Twin Cities, and printed its first St. Paul edition. And whereas June 18th, 1996, startribune.com launched, expanding the Star Tribune's reach and relevance to people across the region and around the world. And whereas over the first 150-year period, Star Tribune has never failed to cover a day's news or deliver a daily newspaper. And whereas the dedicated journalists and employees of the Star Tribune continue to faithfully serve the residents of Minneapolis, St. Paul, and the region. And so now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that we do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2017, Star Tribune Day in the city of Minneapolis. And that be it further resolved, that the I-35W Bridge shall be lit green on May 25th, 2017, in honor of 150 years of continuous operation in Minneapolis. So we will pass this resolution later in the meeting. And, you know, in thinking about what this newspaper has meant to our community, you know, I also think about how many young people got their first job delivering newspapers, you know, and people still reminisce about the paper shacks where they used to pick them up and assemble them on a Sunday morning. And it really is such a part of our daily life in our city to have this wonderful corporation. And when the corporation moved out of their headquarters, they stayed in our downtown, and we're delighted about that. So we are really pleased to be able to honor this wonderful company today and look forward to 150 more years of a changing industry. And it has adapted very, very well, I think, to the new world of information. So I'll turn this over. If anybody would just like to say a few words and introduce yourselves, that'd be great.
I'm Randy Lepidoff. I'm general counsel of the Star Tribune. Super thrilled to be here. We're extremely grateful for this resolution and really looking forward to the lighted bridge. And we hope you all come to our May 25th celebration.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Johnson. I'm in marketing at the Star Tribune. And even though my first job wasn't selling newspapers or delivering them, it was my first job out of college at the Star Tribune, and I've loved it ever since. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Colette Hardy, marketing in the circulation department. And I'm just very excited for this big milestone for the Star Tribune.
I'm Steve Yeager. I'm the chief marketing officer. And it should be said that the folks who are here today represent the team that's putting together our 150th anniversary celebration, which will really kick off on the 25th on Star Tribune Day, where not only the bridge will be lit, Target Field will be lit green, the Lowry Avenue Bridge will be lit green, the top of the Capella Tower will be lit green, and maybe a few other things as well. We'll be celebrating throughout the summer, and we hope everyone here can partake in one way or another. So thank you for doing this today. We appreciate it, and we hope we'll see you on the 25th.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sam Ginsberg, and I work on marketing. Happy to be here. And I also got my first job at Star Tribune right out of college and was able to move over to marketing at the end of last year or so.
Hi, I'm Tim Eichmann. I'm also in marketing. The Star Tribune's the only place I've worked out of college. Have really appreciated the opportunities, and thank you for passing this resolution.
I'm Jane Messenger, creative director. And I also have been with Star Tribune for quite a while, and I -- we love it there, obviously. And I'm super excited about this opportunity.
Tom Rainey, marketing director at the Star Tribune. Although this wasn't my first job, I've been there almost 19 years and have enjoyed every moment, and thank you very much for this resolution.
Thank you all very much for joining us this morning. Looking forward to the party. [applause] I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the city council to order. Clerk, call the roll. Here. Tommy?
Present.
Goodman?
Present.
Frye?
Here.
Palmisano?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Kano?
Here.
Reich?
Here.
Bender?
Here.
Glidden?
Here.
Yang?
Here.
President Johnson?
Here.
There are 12 members present. We have a core of present councilmember Johnson is ill, so we wish him speedy recovery. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, and we have a couple motions to amend the agenda. And the first is a motion by councilmember Gordon to amend the agenda by adding, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution honoring the contributions of Gail Prest. We next have a motion by councilmember Quincy to amend the agenda by adding, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution declaring June 2017 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And I'm trying to think if that's the -- councilmember Gordon got another?
Yes.
Oh, it's under unfinished business. Okay, all right. So on those two motions to amend, is there a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Then a motion to approve the agenda as amended is in order?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 24th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is referral petitions, communications, and reports of the two proper committees.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first to report is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 12 items for approval this morning. The notable items include item number four, which is a change in our temporary expansion of liquor to allow for 24-hour events downtown several, like a couple times a year. This is kind of to address the fact that there are some, generally some milestone events and anniversaries. In this case, the anniversary of the death of Prince, where some establishments would like to play music all night. It would not change the way that we allow liquor to be sold. It would only allow for things like an all-night dance party, only a couple of times a year and only in the downtown DID district. I'll also note item number 11, which is establishment of our criteria for our NOAA preservation fund program. We had a long conversation about it in committee. We'll be moving that forward. And item 12 are the passage of grant funding applications for both the Brownfield Grant Awards from Dede and the TBRA Grant Awards from the Met Council. There are a long list of very interesting projects that are throughout the city, ranging from affordable housing to recreation to job creation. I would guess almost everyone on the council has a project in their ward on this list. So with that, I will move items 1 through 12 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Anyone want to pull anything off? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for consideration today. The first is authorizing issuance of a request for proposals for our third community solar garden. The second is authorizing a license agreement with the Minneapolis Public Schools to use space in the schools for services in case of a public health emergency. And the third item is accepting a grant from the Ian Summerhalden Foundation to cover some of the expenses at our animal care and control building. I will move all three items.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have two items for approval. The first item is the non-standard form contract with the International Association of Firefighters for fire ground survival training. Second item is a contract amendment with SMG for bombing 911 dispatch services at US Bank, and I will move both items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have two items for approval. The first item is the non-standard form contract with the International Association of Firefighters for fire ground survival training. Second item is a contract amendment with SMG for bombing 911 dispatch services at US Bank, and I will move both items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have two items for approval. The first item is the non-standard form contract with the International Association of Firefighters for fire ground survival training. Second item is a contract amendment with SMG for bombing 911 dispatch services at US Bank, and I will move both items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today for consideration and approval. Item one is the Winter Street Northeast Alley Reconstruction Project. Item two is a license agreement with the Hall and Area Repair Association for the Holland Flood Basin Plantings. Item three is the Right-of-Entry Agreement with the Met Council Services for our Ridley Water Plant. Item four is an agreement with Excel Energy to convert overhead electrical facilities for wires on the Forest Street Project. Item five is the Memorandum of Understanding with Minneapolis Park and Rec for the Watershed Management District Integrated Planting Process. Item six is a street reconstruction project layout approval. Item seven is the Penn Oliver Concrete Streets Rehabilitation Project and its amendment to that project hearing date, which is now May 16th. Item eight is accepting the low bid for asphalt material. I move all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today for consideration and approval. Item one is the Winter Street Northeast Alley Reconstruction Project. Item two is a license agreement with the Hall and Area Repair Association for the Holland Flood Basin Plantings. Item three is the Right-of-Entry Agreement with the Met Council Services for our Ridley Water Plant. Item four is an agreement with Excel Energy to convert overhead electrical facilities for wires on the Forest Street Project. Item five is the Memorandum of Understanding with Minneapolis Park and Rec for the Watershed Management District Integrated Planting Process. Item six is a street reconstruction project layout approval. Item seven is the Penn Oliver Concrete Streets Rehabilitation Project and its amendment to that project hearing date, which is now May 16th. Item eight is accepting the low bid for asphalt material. I move all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward 14 items for today's meeting. We have, the first item is a legal settlement. Item number two is the Good Works Program Donation Acceptance for Farmers Market. We also have an agreement with Mendot for a new Skyway Bridge. Item number four is the contract amendment with Gunner Electric at the Convention Center. Item five is a contract amendment with Mendot for city use of land under highway bridges. Item six is a gift acceptance for January and February 2017. We also have the low bid Central Roofing Company for roof replacement projects at Fire Station 17, 21, and 28. Item number eight are a series of contracts with selected vendors for human capital consulting services. Item number nine is the contract amendment with Halogen for performance management system software. Items 10, 11, and 12 are all related to IT contract amendments and extensions for various programs, including ShotSpotter Fingerprint System and the city's Citation Issuance and Management System. We also have a contract amendment with Safari Books Online. And the final item is a collective bargaining agreement. It's a four-year agreement with International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 70 stationary engineers. I'd like to move all 14 items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll. Councilmember Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Housing and Planning Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have six items from zoning and planning. Item number one is approving the reappointment of five members of our city planning commission. This is a huge time commitment, so we're very thankful for all of their volunteer hours. Item number two is a rezoning in street and alley vacation for Minneapolis Public Schools on East Lake Street. Item number three is a rezoning of Phillips Garden at 2700 Cedar Avenue South to allow for a contractor's office. Item number four is an alley vacation for the Hennepin County Facility Services Department on Plymouth Avenue North and Penn Avenue North. And item number five is passage of an ordinance, amending our code of ordinances for the zoning code, to increase the board member stipend for planning commission and zoning board of adjustment. And then item number six is passage of a resolution directing the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development to update the city's comprehensive plan based on what would be 14 overarching goals. And Madam President, if I may, I'd just like to read a bit of that resolution.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. I'll just note that this is our, kind of a, one of many steps in our comprehensive plan update. This is an effort that has been done by hundreds of city staff across departments from public works and planning, our public health department, NCR staff, helping with community engagement, and really our coordinator's office helping lead the work. So many staff, and then every single council member here has been really involved in shaping this work. So it's a big deal. It's a collaborative effort from folks across the city, and then thousands of people in our community have participated so far. And again, we're just kind of at sort of a beginning stage here with the goals, and we'll have more community engagement over the summer and into the next year. So the resolution starts out talking about our process and the ways that our city is growing in population, housing, and employment, and then goes on to say, "Whereas among the 25 most populous metro areas, the Twin Cities metro has among the largest disparities between persons of color and indigenous peoples compared with white, non-Latinos in poverty rates, homeownership, employment, and levels of education. And whereas many participants in the Minneapolis 2040 process thus far hope the plan will address disparities in jobs, housing, air quality, parks, public safety, and transit, including investing more in geographic areas with the most inequities. And whereas Minneapolis has a history of housing patterns that were established through racially restrictive housing covenants and red lighting practices that limited homeownership opportunities for people of color and indigenous peoples, and those same areas experience inequities in health, safety, and the social conditions that support health today. And whereas Minneapolis first grew around streetcar lines and then transportation decisions made in the mid-20th century divided Minneapolis neighborhoods and disproportionately impacted communities of color and indigenous peoples by expanding the amount of pavement devoted to vehicle traffic. And whereas rapid action is necessary to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and curtail the effects of climate change, to which low-income communities are most vulnerable. And whereas the city's future growth must help eliminate disparities among people of color and indigenous peoples compared with white people. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city council directs the CPED department to update the city's comprehensive plan based on 14 overarching plan goals established through engagement feedback and furthering the city's commitment to equitable outcomes in the built, natural, and economic environment. Be it further resolved that in 2040, Minneapolis will have significantly reduced economic housing, safety, and health disparities among people of color and indigenous peoples compared with white people, Minneapolis will have more residents and jobs, and all people will equitably benefit from that growth. All Minneapolis residents will be able to afford and access quality housing throughout the city. All Minneapolis residents will have the training and skills necessary to participate in the economy and will have access to a living major job. The people of Minneapolis will be socially connected, healthy, and safe. Minneapolis will enjoy a high-quality and distinctive physical environment in all parts of the city. The physical attributes of Minneapolis will reflect the city's history and cultures. Minneapolis will have the creative, cultural, and natural amenities that make the city a great place to live. All Minneapolis residents will have access to employment, retail services, healthy food, parks, and other daily needs via walking, biking, and public transit. Minneapolis will be resilient to the effects of climate change and diminishing natural resources, and will be on track to achieve an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Minneapolis will have healthy air, clean water, and a vibrant ecosystem. Minneapolis will remain the economic center of the region with a healthy, sustainable, and diverse economy. Minneapolis will have an equitable civic participation system that enfranchises everyone, recognizes the core and vital services neighborhood organizations provide to the city of Minneapolis, and builds people's long-term capacity to organize and improve their lives and neighborhoods. And finally, the Minneapolis city government will be proactive, accessible, and fiscally sustainable. So finally, just briefly, wanted to thank everyone for all of their work that has gone into this. The introduction and referral calendar has a motion by Councilmember Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer for first reading and referral to Community Development Regulatory Services, amending provisions related to Sunday sales for off-sale liquor licenses. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Bender gives notice, I'm sorry, is the motion by Councilmember Bender to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, site plan review for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee, amending regulations related to exterior building materials. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Resolutions are next, and the first is the Star Tribune Honorary Resolution, which we read before the meeting. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have the 2017 Food Allergy Awareness Week Honorary Resolution, passage of the resolution recognizing May 20, 2017 as Turnip Teal Day in the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have the 2017 Power of Love Gala Honorary Resolution recognizing May 19, 2017 as Wingspan Life Resources Day in the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have the 2017 World Neurofibromatosis Awareness Day Honorary Resolution recognizing May 17, 2017 as World Neurofibromatosis Awareness Day in the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have the Honorary Gail Prest Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to briefly acknowledge the Gail Prest contribution that she's made to the city. She's worked here, well, she started before I did, actually, worked in a number of departments, and will be retiring soon and leaving the city. We're going to present the resolution to her actually at a gathering Friday, April 21st, 3:00 to 4:30 in City Hall, Room 132, so hopefully council members can attend that. I'm sure you'll be getting an invite, but the public is also welcome to come there too.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate Councilmember Gordon and his office's efforts to put together this resolution. I, too, along with Councilmember Gordon, you know, have been around since the time that Gail was identified as the person to lead our sustainability office, I guess you call it, but in essence, that was really the pivot point for the city of Minneapolis, not in doing sustainability work, but on thinking about it on an enterprise-wide basis. So I just really want to acknowledge that Gail was a part of that, of really, I think, bringing to more citywide and frankly also national prominence some of the efforts, enterprise-wide efforts of the city of Minneapolis. And just the other thing I'm going to say is, boy, did Gail Prest have a good sensibility on making amazing hires. And I always think that is a sign of a very good leader to make some excellent hires, and many of the people that she has hired have gone on to other leadership positions in the city, but also elsewhere within our community in the energy and environment arena. So I just wanted to say a personal thank you to Gail for really being influential to me, but also so many other people in the city.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there going to be some sort of event where we can speak to her other than speak about her here?
There's flyers in the hall.
Yeah, Councilmember Gordon. Could you say that out loud, just so people know in the audience? There's a lot of people who've worked with Gail, and they might want to know when.
Absolutely. Madam President, I can reiterate that there will be a presentation of the resolution to Gail and a gathering Friday, April 21st, at 3:00 PM in City Hall in Room 132, and everybody's welcome to attend that and give lengthy speeches and accolades to a wonderful staff person who served the city and the city council and all of us so well over all these years.
Any further discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have the 2017 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month Honorary Resolution declaring June 2017 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in Minneapolis. So any discussion on that resolution? Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick note that we'll be doing a more formal presentation at a meeting in May, but the timing required that we needed to get this in so the MINDOT could take care of the bridge lighting for June. But I just wanted to alert people that the timing sequence seems odd that we're talking about a June event today, but we'll be doing proper presentation in May. Thank you.
Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have Councilmember Gordon, you've got an item.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is the matter of the tire waste that came through the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee meeting, and we referred back to them as a council, also with the direction to come back by today with some action. The committee didn't actually act on it because the Park Board passed a resolution just this week, and our last meeting was before our break, actually. So that's why we need to take a vote on the council to dispose of this matter with, or I should discharge, discharge the committee from further consideration, and I believe that committee members would support that. And we have a substitute resolution before you. This is something that I worked on in cooperation with the Park Board because they had concerns about it. I just want to highlight the two changes that are in the substitute motion. They are underlined. One of them is on Page 2, and it acknowledges the resolution that the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board approved on April 12, committing the board to several actions related to waste tire products, including consideration of alternative materials and new and rehabilitated synthetic turf fields, also reporting to the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee of the City of Minneapolis during athletic field project scoping and researching alternatives to the poured-in-place playground surfacing and the installation of signs at synthetic turf athletic fields, and this would be signs about health and safety practices. Also, there's an addition to the first resolved clause in the resolution that expressly states that the way we understand the use of city funds in the resolution will not include city funds transferred to the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board under the 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan Agreement Ordinance. And I'll also note that also for consideration is the original staff direction that came from the committee also. Happy to take questions on any of that.
Does anyone have any questions for Councilmember Gordon? Seeing none, he has a motion to discharge the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee from further consideration of the recommendations related to the use of recycled tire mulch, and that will require nine votes and then passage of the, I'm sorry. So Councilmember Gordon, does your motion then include?
I move the substitute resolution. It's before you in place of number two.
Okay, all right. It's before you, the resolution under unfinished business. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, Mr. Crowell, we need to take a vote first to discharge the committee and then pass the resolution, or what's the?
Madam President, if you want to wrap the three items together in one vote, it would still take nine to pass discharge the committee, but assuming that nine pass, we would apply that vote to all three items.
Okay, all right. Any preference from anyone? Sounds fine? All right, let's put it all together then. So the motion would be to discharge the committee and then adopt the resolution, and with